We're going to continue the town meeting. Treasurer report.
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm moving toward that. I apologize for the glaze, sir. I got deep into my agenda item. Sorry. Thank you, sir. My apologies to the board. Okay. This represents the cash activity as of December 27, 2019, for the town of Emmitsburg. Cash balance on December 1, 2019 is in the sum of $5,425, sorry, $425,524 on deposit. Deposits added, $232,634. Withdrawals in the sum of $268,529. The operating balance forward, $5,389,629. Listed below are the top 10 checks. Staff is here if there are questions related to these items, as well as the mayor.
I have none.
I have none. Anyone else have any? Good?
Good.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Penny Commission report.
Yes, Mr. President. We met on December 17, and the commission voted to pass on to the Board of Commissioners this evening our vote on ordinance 1907 regarding the forest conservation and ordinance 1908, amending Title 17 for the commercial district buffer. We also conditionally approve the site.
Improvement plan.
Improvement plan for rudders. This time, there was the request for the sidewalk amendment as presented at the last board meeting. That was then approved by the Planning Commission. I believe that was it.
Yep, that's it. So, the rudders is all good to go. They will be, we'll be bringing back the public works agreement in a couple of months. We're working with that and our attorney and the rudders attorney. So, you will be reviewing that and possibly approving it.
Any idea when they might be breaking ground? It seems to be the question around town.
They're supposed to be breaking ground when it starts getting warmer.
Okay.
So, hopefully.
Saturday?
Saturday, yeah.
Right after the bridge is finished, right?
They're supposed to be starting construction hopefully in the summer, so.
Okay. How about the car wash? Is it going to be torn down?
Any day now.
Okay.
Car wash, Dunkin' Donuts?
Dunkin' Donuts, yes.
To understand what we're discussing.
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's exciting. That is exciting.
All right. Any questions for the planning zoning? Administrator?
Yes, sir.
All righty, hearing done, we'll go to the agenda items. The audit, we postponed. Final review and approval of MHA A wayside exhibits for consideration. Kathy?
So, what I'll do is just kind of go over the. We were going to wait and put the new audio system into the next fiscal year budget, but I don't know that that's going to work. So, just a quick, the notes of the wayside exhibit, the total cost of the project is $22,024. Grant funding is 50% of the project or $12,062. Town funds the other half. The town's contribution, 1,100 or in-kind contributions from staff hours, and then the $10,162 are a match. Installation would occur in May or June of 2020 with ribbon cutting. Changes made, and then here's the map that shows the locations. You know, this is all stuff that we went over in the prior meeting. The great fire of 1863, staffing and contractor double check numbering and building locations for map in bottom-left corner and added a label for South Seaton Avenue to aid reader in the site identification. Who's that one? Vigilant Hose Company, they added a photo description, that photo taken looking north across West Main Street was added as requested, and they corrected a spelling error. 19th-century speaking trumpet used by officers to amplify was amplify, ampli, excuse me, their voices during a fire in photo caption per Commissioner Jones Burns.
Good catch.
And then the Chronicle Press, we removed "on" in quotes, "and its commercial printing operations continued." We removed "on," and that was a request for Commissioner O'Donnell. I know Commissioner Ritz had one comment regarding.
Mr. President, should we wait till we're finished?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the Carriage House Inn, we've removed the reference to Gentleman Gins in paragraph from the request of Mayor Briggs and to prevent reader confusion. The grant organization Maryland Heritage Area's authorities have also reviewed the wayside exhibits, and they had no changes.
Okay. Commissioner Ritz?
Go ahead with your Chronicle Press.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the last meeting, I had a question prepared for Scott, I forget his last name, Mr. Scott Grove, wherein I was going to ask him, you know, who verified all your historical records. And before I got a chance to even ask it, he offered that Mike Hillman went through all four of the signs to review. Well, lo and behold, Mike only saw three of the signs. He did not see the Chronicle Press. And then he brought it to my attention, and I actually didn't catch it the first time. It's hard to see up here, but I know you all have your copies. Well, it does say at the bottom, I apologize. So, let's look at the very bottom where it says Chronicle Press. The last sentence states, "The Emmitsburg Chronicle ceased publication in 1971 following a run of 87 years." This is kind of hard to see here.
Was that yours?
This is a file I dug up. This is the Emmitsburg Chronicle, and it's dated Thursday, May 27, 1976. I chose this particular article on purpose because on page five, there's a listing of hospital information, and it shows, yeah, on page five of the PDF.
This is a birth announcement?
Potentially.
Transparent, sir, transparent.
Why not? It's a good point.
It's a good date.
No, I didn't put that up there.
Oh, you only did page one? Anyway, it was kind of funny. It referenced a Mrs. Joseph Rich Jr. Fairfield, because we lived at Fairfield at that point, being discharged from the hospital with her infant son, yours truly. So, I was just pointing out that Emmitsburg Chronicle was alive and well in 1976, as I was.
Well done, sir.
So, if we could just change the wording regarding the Emmitsburg Chronicle ceasing its publication in 1971. The Chronicle started in 1879, that much is correct. It was in publication all the way until 1908. Then there was a brief period of no Chronicle until the 1940s. That's when the elders' belief took over at that point. And they were the owners of the, they ran the paper until 1971. There were a few other owners after that. Eric, Mr. Eric Glass, I know had it for a period, actually during 1976, he would have been the owner of the Emmitsburg Chronicle. It did cease operation in 1977. 1977.
So, you need to change from '71 to '77?
If we could do that, there's two references to it in there. I would ask that. And then the other, the other request is, this sign is going to go out in front of the building where the Chronicle Press is currently located. That's great, you know, they've been around for a long time. I think it's really cool that we showed a smaller picture where that building used to be the original schoolhouse before it moved to this location. But it talks about the newspaper and the Emmitsburg Chronicle, and it kind of, it kind of skims over the beginning of it. Hey, it was founded in 1879, and then it's sort of alluded to that the elder family ran that paper until 1971. That's not the case. We have individuals, Samuel Mader actually started in 1879, Sterling Galt, a member of Emmitsburg community, I believe, the land, some of the land that he owned is now the Emmitsburg Cemetery over near the entrance to Brookfield. And actually, he owned the house at 219 West Main Street where I grew up. And Sterling Galt's brother Norman was at one time married to Edith Bowling. Norman passed away, she was a widow. President Woodrow Wilson was a widower, and he actually came to Emmitsburg and dined at Sterling's house in October of 1915 with the future Ms. Wilson, when his second term is presidency. She was the first lady. Rumor has it she also ran the country after he had a series of several strokes. So, if, I think that we need some more information regarding the Emmitsburg Chronicle, not just the reference to its run with the elder family at that point, unless we remove it somehow and incorporate a wayside exhibit for the Chronicle Press somehow, which did begin life on West Main Street, it's now part of the VHC complex, right across from Commissioner Davis's house, I believe. So, that's just my thoughts. I don't know if any.
Do you want to add a paragraph on that?
If anybody wants to jump in there, if I touched on that enough.
Mr. Sweeney, I have a question for you.
I think probably changing the date there and adding another paragraph up here in the corner, there's a space up in the corner that's not utilized, we could put, you know, some of the information that Mr. Ritz had gotten when he was researching it, if you want to do that. Do you have anything written up that you think will go in that spot?
I don't, and that's the problem. If we don't, I mean, we could come up with something really quickly maybe, but then again, I don't want to do anything in haste. So, if we're approving these this evening.
You want to do three out of four?
If we did three out of four, what issues, how much does that put us behind in putting up the signs?
I think you'd be okay postponing it till next meeting. However, I would just recommend approving them all at the same time, so the package is approved.
Oh, sorry.
Altogether, so.
I had no issue with the other three, but I don't know if anyone else did. I was okay there.
But staff would need some guidance in at least direction of what you'd want shown on, on the sign.
I think he wants some more history of the Chronicle itself put on the top, or added to the wayside exhibit, is that correct?
Yes, it seems like we're leaving, we're leaving a significant portion of that out. This is almost two things here, the Emmitsburg, the Chronicle Press business, which has been around for an awfully long time, in the building on South Seaton, and the Emmitsburg Chronicle, which did go by different names, too. It was Emmitsburg Chronicle, the Yemmitsburg Chronicle, the Weekly Chronicle, it was all the same paper.
So, would you want to acknowledge it in very, like, the Emmitsburg Chronicle in various forms existed from, served the community from date one to date two, something along those lines? Is that what you're looking to do, to?
Yeah, I mean, we can even put 1879 to 1908, and then again from 1940, don't know the other number off the top of my head, I'm so sorry, until 1977.
So, as a thought, could you come back to the board with this? I mean, Mr. Sweeney, would you think about that? Is it a possibility, maybe? I mean, considering that modification to it, so it hits the marks on the time pieces, on the time spans?
Do you think you can have something written up to put, to fix the time, this time schedule you want to put on there, Joe, before the next meeting?
Before the next meeting? Absolutely. No, that's, I just can't do it right now. I'm sorry. I don't have, I, I'd be, I don't want to come up with some verbiage this evening and then us vote on it, and then, my whole point is historical accuracy, and I don't want to be the one to blow it.
I think we need a motion to postpone it to the next meeting. I mean, and that way you have, you have time to put on what you want. I don't know if we have to send it to him so we can.
Yeah, if we could get it, you know, a couple, you know, at least a week ahead of time, I don't know what their turnaround is to put it on, so obviously, the sooner the better, because I don't know what the contractor's timeframe would be to put that blurb on this exhibit.
I'll email you by close of business Friday. How's that?
That works.
You're not going to change anything else, other than putting a blurb on another, in a couple of dates?
Yes, I'm not.
Other than that, it's okay.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm misspeaking here. Commissioner O'Donnell, did you want to?
If I could just share a thought, and this is what I'd like to get clarification on. Mr. Mayor, are you the point person on the signage? Is that fair to say, or no?
I'm working with our town clerk.
Okay, all right. So, with the mayor and town clerk, the question I have is, do we intend to create more interpretive signs through this program?
Yes.
Okay. So, then I'll go, I'll make, I'll say it this way. I think it would be a good idea to postpone approval until we have the language that aligns with most, with what Mr. Ritz is discussing for the sake of more accuracy. The one thing I'd like to see us in a future sign would be more information related to President Wilson and his connection to the town, and a photograph, if that could be mustard, or someone's hand rendering, or something. Presidential history has its own set of followers and would certainly drive visits. And if there's anything else regarding other presidential visits, I know Mimi Eisenhower, you know, stopped at North Seaton Avenue by rumor and commented on the beauty of the view. And, you know, any executive references would be a useful thing for signage. I think that would, that would help us. If only we had someone who knew a lot about local history in the room. Hmm. Oh, hi, Mr. Ritter. Okay, so, moving from there. So, if we could, if we could consider that for a future sign, but in the meantime, I make a motion that we table this agenda item until the February meeting.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell. Do I second?
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Burns. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you.
Just whatever you're going to put on there, make sure you get it into her so we have time for the next agenda. For staff.
Yes, because we do have a grant timeline that we have to adhere to, so hopefully we can get it done and approved at the next meeting.
Trying to figure out, we got a public hearing now?
Yes.
Item number three, we review Planning Commission recommendation, hold a public hearing. Okay. I'm going to call a meeting, close the town meeting, we need to close the town meeting first. No? All righty, so I'm going to open, propose opening a meeting to consider a proposal ordinance 1907, ordinance 19-08 has now started. We will start the public hearing. Go ahead, Zach.
Okay, thank you.
Presentation up there?
Sure. No, we don't have any presentations up there. So, I'm just going to go over both of the ordinance pretty quick here. So, this public hearing was advertised as required by town code in the Frederick News Post on December 20, 2019, and December 27, 2019. We'll first start with proposed ordinance 19-07, which would amend the town code, Chapter 16, Point 48, forest conservation. The town's forest conservation program, which is town code again, Chapter 14, or 1648, was created in 1993. Small amendments to this chapter were approved in 2002, which was ordinance 0203, and 2014, ordinance 14-03. Periodically, the General Assembly of Maryland, with guidance from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, Resources Forest Service, amends the state's Forest Conservation Act. The town is required to update the town's forest conservation chapter. Each time, each time, the General Assembly amends the act. If passed, the proposed amendment would bring the town into compliance with the current version of the act. Also, the Planning Commission recommended approval of ordinance 19-07 with no comment at their December 17, 2019 meeting. On to the next. This is proposed ordinance 19-08, which would amend the town code, Section 172090, the commercial district buffer. So, this section was approved in 2015 with ordinance 15-02 in order to limit potential noise and light pollution from businesses in the commercial zoning districts, which are the neighborhood commercial B1 and general commercial B2, on to neighboring residential districts. If passed, the proposed amendment would allow the Planning Commission to waive the commercial district buffer requirements during the site plan process. If the Planning Commission determines that the proposed use of the commercial property would not cause detriment to the neighboring residential properties, the exemption would only apply to the B1 zone. Again, the Planning Commission recommended approval of 19-0, ordinance 19-08 with no comment at their December 17, 2019 meeting. And that is the staff presentation.
Thank you. Is there any questions for town staff at this time? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Just a quick item. I'm looking at page 45 of 89. I hope I'm in the right spot. I'm looking at item three in bold print. In the case of afforestation or reforestation, include in a forestation or reforestation plan with a timetable and description of needed site and soil preparation, species, size, and spacing to be used. Okay. I'm assuming that the burden of expense falls on to the property owner to create this plan. But what I didn't see, and I'm missing it perhaps, is that clearly stated in the language here that that is their, that is their responsibility to produce?
Yes, I can confirm that is in the ordinance itself. I do not know the specific page number now. However, we have an additional added protection for the town that's in our fee schedule.
Terrific. And again, for clarification, it is the Planning and Zoning Board that makes the determination or the recommendation?
The determination, the Planning Commission.
Determination, very good. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ritz?
How does this conservation plan fall in with the current conservation zone on the east side of Route 15?
So, they're two separate issues.
So, they don't even come in?
No, they're, they're not even related. Basically, that's a zoning district, so it's only going to allow uses such as, you know, homes. It's going to be.
Highway services.
Parks, yeah. Not even businesses. It's very, very restrictive for forest type of properties. And this has to do with new construction, any kind of grading. So, if you go over 40,000 square feet, you have to do some kind of a forest conservation plan in accordance with state law.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Not for me.
Commissioner Davis?
No, I'm good.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes, sir.
I have none also. All right, is there any, yeah, I have any. Is there any public comment on the matter at hand? Anybody from the public want to come up here and comment on the, on the two ordinances?
Doesn't appear so, sir.
Okay. I have to add. If no one has any more to present, the public comment period is now closed. All righty, we will have, the board needs to deliberate as, anybody got any more discussion they want to have on the ordinance at hand before we close the public hearing?
For 1907?
Yes.
Forestry.
Mm-hmm. We have one.
It's actually for both.
It's for both.
Oh.
Oh, we're doing both.
The public hearing is for, it's a joint public hearing for both ordinance 07 and 08.
Oh.
So, do we need to reopen the hearing?
I didn't close it yet.
I'm sorry.
I just closed public comment.
Okay, that's right.
Okay.
Understood.
Now, we are on discussion for the board.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell, do you have any more?
No, sir. Not for that item, miss her. Not for 1907.
Mr. Ritz?
Not for 1907.
Go ahead.
No. Mr. Burns?
No, I have none either.
Yes, Catherine?
The Planning Commission, as Zach said, reviewed both of these, and they made no changes to what you, as the board, saw at the previous meeting. I just, I couldn't, I don't remember if Zach mentioned that or not.
And just for transparency's sake, at that meeting, I abstained, knowing full well that I would, it would be an item for vote this evening.
Go ahead.
Okay, do we have to take these one, do we want to vote on this one now?
If you could do a motion to end the public hearing first, please.
Okay. Well, do we want to do the ordinance 08 beforehand?
You have to do it after the public hearing.
Oh, okay. No, I meant that, any other discussion, they only did 07.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anything they want to discuss on 08?
No, sir.
Mr. Ritz?
On 08?
Yes.
No, that was, that one was straightforward. I'm satisfied with that.
Okay. Commissioner Davis?
Good.
Commissioner Burns?
I'm good.
I'm good also. All righty, I'm going to close the public hearing. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made, Commissioner O'Donnell.
I second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Burns. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Public hearing closes. Now, we need the motion to vote on the, do you want to vote it one at a time or together?
Separately, please.
Separate. I need a motion to accept, for ordinance 07.
I make a motion to accept ordinance 1907 as it's, as it was, as modified, pardon me. Is that satisfactory for staff?
I'm sorry, you said as modified?
As modified.
As presented?
As presented, okay.
As presented, yeah.
Fair enough.
I'll second.
Thanks, sir.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Any other discussion before we vote?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any ayes? Motion carries, five to zero. I need a motion on the second ordinance. Anyone?
I make a motion to accept ordinance 1908 as presented.
I second the motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Commissioner Ritz?
A current business in this particular resident, I'm sorry, this particular zone of B1, prior to this evening, would have had to have a fence installed, because this was prior to this evening. If we pass this tonight, they're still required to keep that fence up, correct?
That's not correct, because they have not submitted the site plan yet.
I'm talking about an existing business.
Oh, existing?
Not grandfathered.
Yes.
Oh, you have to keep it up? Absolutely.
West of this property?
Yes, it, yes, you do have to keep it up, because it was previously approved with the, the fence up.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And it's still based off whether the Planning Commission approves the modifications anyway. They may come back and say, no, you need to put a fence, you need to put landscaping up. It's just basically putting the burden on the Planning Commission now to make that determination if somebody wishes to bring it to the Planning Commission.
If that happens this year, and I'm on the Planning Commission because of this evening, how does that work with my input on the Planning Commission?
You can vote on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just making sure. Thank you.
All right.
Because you haven't spoken against or for, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any ayes? Motion carries, five to zero. Approval of logging stand number six.
Okay, we have a PowerPoint up here, but I'll, I'll start a while. So, just so, there's an update for the board regarding stand five. They have, I spoke. Uh, they have, I spoke with Mike Kay today. He made a site visit this morning with Mr. Dakota Dirtcho. So, um, basically, he said, I visited, uh, stand five this morning. I would estimate that ninety-five percent of the trees have been cut. As far as the tree, the tree felling goes, I think the loggers have done a good job, and there's little resid, residual, residual damage to the remaining trees. Um, however, there have been, oh, there have been some attempt to level out and main, level out the main haul road, especially near Hampton Valley Road, but sections of the haul road are rutted. Uh, some of the main skid trails are rutted as well. I noticed that some logging debris is blocking some of the bike trails, and some sections of the trail, of these trails are rutted. Uh, the loggers should return to remove their equipment and straighten things up. I can, I can mention that the ruts should be repaired in the haul road, main skid trail, and along the bike trails. The brush should be removed from the bike trails as well. The water diversion broad-based dips should be reinstalled in the main haul road, and this road should be seeded and hayed. He said, once all this has been completed, he says, we should con, uh, be contacted to do a final inspection, then you can return performance bond once everything has been completed. Um, he spent, sent a, a second e, email after that, and he said, due to the muddy conditions, um, they're not going to be returning this week to finish the logging, and they are hoping for drier conditions and freezing weather. It estimate, Clarence estimates that it would take two more days to finish cutting and two days for cleanup, and then whatever additional works needs to be done on the trails. Um, are there, are there any questions for stance five before I get into stance six? I know, I will, I'm gonna send you the contract that we have signed with Mr. Tipton.
Okay.
That will outline exactly what you were questioning earlier.
Okay.
The protections.
Right, the language in the, the, the trigger phrase was performance.
Right.
And that was as ambiguous as one could run across. Um, can I identify areas of specific concern?
Um...
For repair?
Sure.
So the, the contractor can clean up, like, with, with specific knowledge of...
We would actually like to meet with you on site if that's, if that's possible.
Sure, okay.
I think it'd be a lot better.
Let me just share with the board, though, what I've observed and, and what I'm aware of. Um, okay, so, so, all right, everybody, here's the dam of Hampton Valley Road. This is Hampton Valley Road, uh, and it will continue to split here, here's Crystal Fountain Road. Hampton Valley Road hooks down toward town. This is the odd triangular intersection right here. So is everybody good or we're aggressing? Okay, so, here's the upper reservoir, Rainbow Lake. Here's the lower reservoir. Um, this is stand five right here. This is what we're discussing. Um, stand five involves both the yellow trail and part of the red trail. Much of the red trail from here to here, this low point for our mapping purpose, was pretty much wiped out by the logging operation. Not maliciously, just the nature of the operation tore up the trail. Uh, there's a second spot lower. This was a service road that existed before this operation that was refreshed, I'll say, and where the road crosses this, the yellow trail here, uh, a significant amount of damage was done to the trail here. Uh, this is pretty straightforward cleanup work, but this area here would require some significant work. And I don't know that professional, sorry, I don't know that volunteers singularly could get that trail back in order. So, um, I'll look at what's been done, and I'll, I'll make my ask if there's a need after they've made that repair. Down here in the lower area where the road crosses, the service road, I can only assume that they're going to be using it, um, you know, to withdraw from the area, but this is a, this is a very light repair in my, my experiences with trail work. Um, this is far more significant, this, this upper section up here. The other part is, there's a steep grade where it crosses yellow in this lower section, and if we could give attention to water abatement where the road slopes down, we could pull what's called a draw-off there in order to reroute water so it doesn't spill directly in puddle right there at that kind of platform where the trail is. Because there's a side profile like down the trail and down again. So, um, those are the things, uh, those are the things that I will be pursuing in, in future time.
I will take care of that by going out on site with them.
I will go on site with, with, uh, who, who would I be visiting with, by the way?
It'd be, uh, Mr. Kay, who's the DNR representative, and it'll also be Mr. Tipton, who's the, the logger.
Great.
And, um, Mike has been, he's been ecstatic how great this, great a job they've been doing in the conditions that they've had.
Right.
Um, he has a hundred percent confidence that they will repair your trails. And if they do not, we have...
Our trails, our trails.
Our trails, yeah.
Yes.
Um, if they do not, we have the performance bond, and the performance bond does state specifically that it shall be used for trail damage and return it back to its natural state. So, I'll give you the language.
Sure, that'd be great, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so, any more questions for stand five? I just wanted to give a brief update on that. Okay, for stand six, um, there's forty-five acres, dominant species of white oak, red oak, and tulip poplar. The estimated value, um, is forty-five thousand to fifty thousand. The proposed timeline, uh, once approval is, uh, granted, we brought it here in January because that's when Mike and Dakota, um, have time to mark the trees. Uh, they're busy other times of the year. So if we would get approval tonight, they'll probably be out there tomorrow or the next day starting to mark. So they'll mark trees, they'll develop the site map and develop bid, um, prospectus. Uh, May, they're gonna send the bid prospectus to contractors for bidding, actually, we do that. In June, we'll select the successful bidder and we'll bring it back to the board. So if you're not satisfied with stand five, we can discuss that at that meeting if that's sufficient. Um, July, and then we would begin harvest upon receiving the permits. And we should not have to receive to apply for a stream crossing permit this time, according to Mr. Kay.
So even, so, um, basically, all we're asking for tonight is basically permission to mark stand six, because if we're not satisfied with the repairs that are made in stand five or we're not s- satisfied with anything, we don't have to move forward with it, but we, apparently, they have a small window to mark in January.
Oh, and I also have a, a close-up view of that. I should have showed you that earlier.
Mr. Sweeney, public comment?
Yes, I was waiting for everyone to get finished speaking.
Sorry, okay.
Um, um, Jake Waller, do you want to speak now?
Well, actually, I'm Jack.
Oh, Jack, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I should know that because you've been here three times already.
Yeah, well, you know, um, I'm Jack Waller. I live on Hampton Valley Road and, uh, live right, right near all this darn, um, woodcutting. And, uh, I'm not here to argue or do anything like some other people did tonight, so I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, how comes, uh, stand five, which is the one that you were just talking about, didn't start until like November?
Yep, sure. We had to, uh, apply for a stream crossing permit through MDE, and that's, we took three months to receive approval, so that really put him behind. He, that's not gonna happen again with stand six because it doesn't require a stream crossing permit, and the county held us up a little bit, and that's all I'll say about that matter. There was no issues on our part, it just got lost in the paperwork.
I was gonna say, because we had this dry summer, and it would've been a great time for them to do it then, now it's nothing but darn mud up there. And as far as the red trail, which is, uh, I'm sure you're familiar with, which is part of number six, um, I went up there Sunday, and you can only go so far.
Right.
And these trees have been already been, uh, dotted since back in the summer, so I don't quite understand what you're talking, yeah, they ha, they are. You go up on the red trail, there's all kinds of trees that ain't been cut. And I'm sure that they're going, you don't have the, um, what do you want to call it? The landing where the, they load, load your stuff up? Is that gonna be down by the second lake, the little lake?
That's to be determined. When Mike and Dakota go up to mark, they then do a site plan, so they'll know better once they start, uh, moving and walking the, the, the area.
I'm just saying, since it's so far down, down the road further, uh, you know, down towards Crystal Fountain.
Mm-hmm.
It would make sense if they would use some other landing spot than up there where they're, you know...
Oh, it's not gonna be the same landing spot, no.
Mr. Waller, just to address markings, markings that I know that exist there, you know, universal blue boundary, I know you know that, so if it's blue, it's the property boundary. Um, for the red trail, we used red rectangular blazes that are literally about this size on the trees. I'm pretty sure you know about that. So any other marking would be not related to property boundary or related to the trails, so...
These are red dots, orange dots, actually.
Hmm, okay. No idea.
And they were there all summer, so that's, that's why I'm surprised that you're saying they haven't done it yet. Because I, when I looked at that, when, I went on that red trail, I thought, holy cow, they don't cut all these trees down. That, that trail's gonna be destroyed.
So Commissioner O'Donnell, maybe when you take your visit to look at the trail, you can take a look at, at that as well, because that would not be Mike Kay, and it was not the town.
Sure, I will look at that.
So if you want to take a look at that, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Will do.
And these are in this area of, uh, stand six that you're referring to, the ones with the three orange dots?
I'm, I'm guessing it's six, because I can't believe they would haul those trees clear over to where they, they had the landing site now.
Okay.
I mean, I just can't believe it. That's a long ways.
Hmm. Well, thanks for the tip.
Well, you know, anyway, the other thing I wanted to ask is, is I just wanted to point out that even though you're cutting down trees that are in, and, you know, you're getting the money off the trees, of course, it's destroying a lot of other, uh, uh, tree, not trees, but shrubs and stuff, and, and those trails will never be the same. I mean, they could say they're gonna fix them up so that they don't have dips in them and stuff, but they're not gonna have trees there anymore, and it's gonna cause erosion, and that's what I think, anyway.
My hope is the understory comes back very quickly. I mean, that's been my experience with trail maintenance, but, um, yeah, you, you and I are of like mind. I try to be optimistic, though.
And then I got one last question. Now, after this one, number six, is there gonna be future logging up there? Do you know of?
I'm sorry, future logging, I'm sorry.
So you got stand six, uh, I mean, I know you guys own a lot of land up that way.
Oh, I believe stance, oops, stand seven's next, I believe.
And where was that at?
Uh, shoot.
Bottom left corner.
Yeah, way down on the left, that little tag down the bottom.
Oh, that, uh...
That's seven?
That's seven.
Oh, yeah, there's your zigzag trail. Okay, I see it.
It's seven or eight, I'm sorry. I, I don't know the top of my head. That's a while, that's next year.
I hope we cannot do eight, truly.
Yeah, I don't think we would recommend eight.
I would argue, like, you know, horse teams, if we did it that, I mean, I'm not being sarcastic, I mean, literally.
I'd have to look at the plan, I'm not even sure.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Waller, just to, to throw in, thank you for coming in. Um, I'll try to follow up with you as soon as I have more information, and I'll follow up with you related to your Sawyer request also.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All righty, I need a, a motion to approve logging stand six.
I propose the motion to approve logging stand six.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Witz. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Further discussion, sir?
Is there more discussion?
One item. Um, for clarification, in the motion, this is for marking stand six, correct? Singularly for marking, not accepting it for the logging operation.
We just call it logging because that's what's gonna be occurring, but you won't approve the actual contract, so they can't log until you approve it.
Right. This is just for the marking, I guess.
You have to approve the contract.
At a later date.
So this is for marking, correct? Is that right then?
Yes, you are correct. This is for marking. Nothing will happen if we're not satisfied.
Right.
The, the process will end.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Sweeney, all I have.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll add that, um, we had discussions with Michelle on, from the auditors about the monies that are received for the logging. It is, in fact, going back into the water department, so the monies received will help us with, um, making any necessary repairs, investigations, money going forward with, um, much-needed work.
Okay, number five, agenda item. Approval ordinance twenty dash oh one, creation of sewer and water connection fee payment plan.
Right, we'll just go over this briefly. This is the ordinance that you've, um, seen, you saw at the last, um, workshop, and it was a product of the previous workshop, uh, and meetings. Basically, this is the, um, ordinance to establish the fee payment plan. Letter C, a sewer and water connection fee payment plan is established for non-residential properties, terms and conditions of which shall be determined from time to time by the mayor and board of commissioners enacted by resolution. Um, section thirteen oh four oh one addresses the fixture unit chart equivalent units for commercial, industrial, and institutional properties, and the fixture count continues. And then on page seventy-five, letter C, um, this is for the sewer, the initial one was for the water system, uh, on page seventy-five addresses the sewer system, and again, that establishes the, the fee payment plan for non-residential. And that's the, that's the ordinance twenty oh one. Um, that's the one that reduce, essentially gives you the option of establishing fee payment plan, and then, um, reduces the fixture count for certain, um, entities. Do you want me to keep, you want to talk about all three and then go back?
I guess we can go ahead and do that at the same time.
Okay. Resolution twenty oh four R is a resolution establishing the terms and conditions for the sewer and water connection fee payment plan for non-residential units, and basically it, um, it, uh, refers to exhibit A, which sets the terms and conditions for which non-residential properties, um, are eligible for the fee connection, or the fee payment plan, um, in which we've all gone over in the workshops. Number three and number four essentially, um, outline the, the terms, allows up to a five-year payment plan with at least twenty-five percent down, and then you may waive up to ten percent of the total, and then it outlines some of the other qualifications, um, and again, they can only have one payment plan at a time. I would go ahead and, um, go over those, and then I'll, I'll give Zach agenda item number seven.
All righty, I need a, I need a motion to accept, uh, ordinance dash twenty dash oh one.
I propose the motion to accept ordinance number twenty dash zero one.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Motion carries, four to one.
And then the resolution?
I need a motion to accept the resolution twenty dash oh four R.
I propose the motion to accept resolution number twenty dash oh four R.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Any other discussion before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Motion carries, four to one. Item number seven.
Okay, so just as we stated in the workshop, we do not have the authority as a town board to establish this tax credit, so we have to go to the General Assembly and the governor and ask for the same exact credit as the county gives, which is the small business tax credit. And it gives six years of tax credits. The credit is based on the increase of real property tax assessments resulting from the business expansion or a new business. The credit decreases over six years, and as you can see on the graph, year one and two is 40% tax credit, three and four is 30%, five, six is 20%, and seven plus is zero. And in order to be eligible for this tax credit, you have to obtain at least 2,500 square feet of new or expanded premises and employ at least five people in a full-time job within the first 24-month period after occupying the new or expanded premises.
Mr. Sweeney?
So, sure.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, sir. For the eligibility requirement, the requirement of full-time employment for five, how do we determine five as the number? Were we trying to target an industry or?
So, the county's actually willing to give us, actually do that for us, so they're going to do the verification while they do their own tax credit program. So we have the same exact thing.
Okay, so we're using their language then?
Same exact.
Okay, we're aligned with them, thank you. That's it, thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Permission?
I need a motion to get the authorization for the mayor and town staff to seek the amendment proposal for the tax credit.
I make a motion to accept the proposed small business tax credit requiring the mayor and staff to seek an amendment from the General Assembly and governor for authorization of, for authorization implementation, to authorize implementation of the small business tax credit.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Burns. Any other discussion before we vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Ritz?
I just wanted to thank town... Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Shame on you.
Sorry, I was looking up a word.
Is that the Angry Birds theme?
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank town staff for all the time that they put into the...
I want to change the subject.
To the, uh, now look what you did, you made me lose my train of thought. The water table rate, the tax incentives, I have my reasons for voting, though I don't feel that I need to give them, but thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays?
Tax credit.
Motion carries, five to zero. Item number eight.
Number eight, policy 20-01. This is as a result of the last meeting and discussions regarding the ball field. The board decided they wanted to waive fees and add a sunset clause, so basically, this policy will replace previously adopted policy 18-01 and related to the ball field charges only. So, we added no charge under all the categories, single use, league use, and tournament use. We did add the line that field reservation requests will be accepted for each season beginning on January 15th of each year. And then we added a, the sunset clause that we discussed, the provisions as outlined in policy 20-01 shall expire 12 months from the date of passage unless extended by the mayor and board of commissioners. The following scheduled ball field field shall take full effect when policy 20-01 expires. So, in a year, the board needs to decide whether or not they want to continue with the no charge or revert back to the policy as it was or adopt a new policy and new fees.
I need a motion to accept the amendment to policy 18-01.
I make a motion to accept the amendment to P-18-01, ball field reservations fees.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir.
Second by Commissioner Ritz. Any discussion?
Just a comment, Mr. Hall, okay. I want to commend Mr. Davis for his effort to jumpstart softball and baseball in the community. I also hope that this will help that, and that's my comment, sir.
Mr. Davis.
During the season, how did we work Little League when we had them here before? Did we only allow them to use that field six days during the regular season?
All year long, so essentially, yes. Each field has to be left open one day a week, so they don't have continuous usage. Like, one field's not used seven days a week and nobody then is allowed to use it. It's always been that way, even under Mr. Haller, and that's the way we operated with the Little League, and they were very acceptable, accepting of it.
Yeah, I guess if they went down there on Sunday and nobody was there, they could use it anyway, right?
Right.
Yeah, certainly, to the public.
Okay. Good.
Any other discussion before we vote?
No, I just want to thank Commissioner Davis as well. I know that Mr. Lowry sent us all an email. Once upon a time, I was, well, I still am, interested in recreational baseball in Emesberg. I wasn't the right guy for that, though, so thank you, Commissioner Davis, for stepping up, and I'm excited to see recreational use, just family pickup games, and, you know, the Mid-Maryland United, if they use our field, I thought that they might be here tonight, but they're not. I just want to see all our fields get used by baseball and softball, and I'm happy. Thank you.
I too am happy that the field's going to be used again because they were used for 50 years in a row and then just abandoned for two years. It was a shame to leave them go like that, and I appreciate all your work you've done to fight.
Well, yeah, and just as a side note, we do need to make sure that continues to be used as a park, because if not, we happen to find the deed that says if not, it reverts back to the previous owner. So I have that, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries, five to zero.
And staff, thank you so much. You were very helpful with getting all this stuff together, too.
You're welcome.
Kind of out there in left field on some of it.
Item number nine. Ordinance amend title 13-04, .170, water systems prohibited acts.
This is me, and then it'll be you. Yes, so after having some conversations with other town managers and doing some research on fire hydrants and people accessing fire hydrants, the first step that I found that a lot of municipalities have is they make it a fine if you access without authorization a fire hydrant. So we simply added the language to section 1304, 170, prohibited acts generally, and it just states letter D, any person or persons detected connecting to a town fire hydrant for any non-emergency purpose will be subject to a $1,000 fine for each offense, making it punishable to access fire hydrant without permission. Some municipalities go further and they establish a permit system, and if you don't comply with that permit system, that permit's revoked and you can no longer access the fire hydrant system. That's going to take a little bit more research, but I wanted to get this taken care of because it's a step in the right direction.
I have a question.
Yes.
I don't know if we do or not, I should know, this has been here so long. Do we have a meter that we put on the fire hydrant for if anybody wants to buy the water?
So, the only place that has asked to connect to the fire hydrant has been Maloney Construction at the bridge, and we did put a meter on that, but no, not all fire hydrant. It's something that we would go out and put on for you to utilize.
Well, what it is, other counties, you have to come into the town office and rent a meter or purchase a meter and you pay for the water when you hook to the power. That way you know.
Right, well, we don't want to encourage anybody to use the fire hydrants at this point.
Right.
The problem, a lot of the problem with the hydrants are, they don't, they pull, they open it up, and Commissioner Davis can speak to this, you open them up and it come, the water, you don't open them up slowly, you open up fast, the water comes shooting out. The whole system is all messed up then, so we don't want anybody... We don't want anybody using our systems at all.
Correct.
So, I don't even know if it's of an interest to even do a permit system or leave it, you don't use our...
Right now, we don't want to do it while we have brown water.
Well, this time.
No. But what it is, if we do get it all fixed and we want to do that, that's the way to do it. But the, yeah, also, you're correct, because if you open them and close them too fast, you can break...
This piques my interest.
Causes fracture in the lines, so.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Ritz?
The reference to Maloney, how often have they used that hydrant?
Just one time.
Just one time.
Just once, and it's been a long time.
It wasn't like, you know, October, November timeframe?
No.
Okay.
So here's the thought. I would suggest in time we do create a permit system, but when we are facing the difficulties we're facing right now, should we have a permit system in place with difficulties such as this with the water system, we obviously do not issue permits.
All righty.
Right, I will work with other town managers and develop something once we get through this phase.
Okay, I need a motion to accept ordinance to amend title 13-04, .170.
I propose the motion to accept ordinance to amend title 13-04, 170, water systems prohibited acts general for consideration, or acts general.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Any other discussion?
One question.
Mr. Ritz?
Someone in violation would be fined $1,000. Where would that fee be applied to?
It would, more than likely, since it's a water issue, it would go back into the water department. I'd have to confirm with Michelle to make sure that that was, the auditors, to make sure that that was okay, but that would be my interpretation of it, that it goes back into the water department, sorry.
That sounds reasonable. Let's say the auditors say that's not due to the, let's say like it can't happen that way, then what?
They would go to the general fund, and my recommendation would be to put it back into Public Works, because Public Works, Department 30 Streets, they do a lot with water repairs. They assist the water department, they do the water meters. There's a portion of the Public Works, Department 30, that does water line work, so then I would put it there, so the money would go, essentially go back into it.
That makes sense to me.
But I'm sure she'll be okay with it. She was okay with the logging going back into the water.
Okay.
Mr. Sweeney?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, sir. A related question, as you're doing your research, could you find out how other towns or municipalities manage their hydrant use monitoring? Excuse me, not just the flow meter piece at the, sorry, at the meter itself, but something that triggers beyond where, if I understand our system, it triggers that there's been a big pull, but we can't identify with much precision where the pull is occurring.
Right.
So if that conversation could be added to with other towns and municipalities, that'd be great.
Well, usually what I see when I, down in Hur County, usually the ones who go to use the fire hydrant are usually pool, people who are filling big trucks up to swimming pools.
Right, drilling and sanding, such.
Or lawn care, who are doing lawn care, they'll access, when they're doing big lawns or what, they're watering or whatever, they'll access it sometimes without permission. And then, and there's a town, they have to be caught by a Public Works person or somebody has to call in. It's hard to monitor where you're, they don't have a sensor or anything or anything.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, I mean, I've seen these at MML, but the systems are expensive, it sounds like, but at the same time, costs for things like this seem to be reduced, and I'm sure somebody clever has some other flow monitor, at least like sectoring up a community, you know, breaking up into a grid.
For us, it should be easy to monitor because our town's so small. I mean, if anybody's drawing water out in a big truck, somebody's going to see it and they don't accept fire academy and provincial houses because it's hard to get on the property out there without somebody knowing. We had two leaks out, then no. So there are only two places we would know if they're using the water from. But anyplace else, with the amount of people we have, somebody would see them using the fire hydrant.
I mean, as goofy as it sounds, I'm thinking like a wax seal or a security tape or something on the valve bolt to indicate use, just so, just for tracking purposes, something, I mean.
We have had discussions on what we can do, so, yeah, I definitely will follow up.
Thank you.
You're going to shoot me for asking this question because I want to get done just like everybody else. What does a tractor and trailer load of water cost?
How many gallons?
Say 5,000 gallons, somebody brings a 5,000 gallon tanker in and hooks the hydrant and gets it filled up, and we come up and go, we caught you, you owe us a thousand bucks. He goes, that was a bargain, you know? It costs $1,500 to buy the water someplace else. We're making sure we're covering the cost, right?
That's a good question.
Oh, it's way, a thousand would be way more than that.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not...
Because in reality, it's essentially $2.40 for every thousand gallons is what our water cost breaks down to, what, .0024 a gallon?
14 bucks, or 14...
I wonder what they'd haul it for, until you get a trucker to haul it, though, as long as we're good.
5,000 gallons would be 14.50.
That's a good question, though.
Good, good, just want to make sure we're not giving somebody a bargain.
You want to add a zero to that, is that what you're saying?
I don't care. After what we went through tonight, I don't care.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries, five to zero. Item number 10.
This is the mayor, finally.
Amendment to the contract approving the sale for 140 South Seaton Avenue.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you. At the December meeting, we presented a contract on the property at 140 South Seaton Avenue, the residential section of the property, which we had subdivided, and we're going to keep the more industrial property storage area behind it. And the price was $160,000, and they, we had an estimated, just an estimate what we would net, and that would be $149,690 with, you know, it was an as-is contract, but as these as-is contracts go, and we would bite into that a little bit, but USDA, United States Department of Agriculture is a tough lender, and they had a home inspector come in, they had an appraiser come in, and what we found is, and I really want to, you all gave me sort of the go-ahead of this, but I felt I ought to bring it back to you, because the expenses that we would have to incur would be an additional, it looks like $9,609,626 to option one would remove steps and reinstall after work is completed with French drain work, that would be $6,500, mold remediation, and I was looking up the, what a HEPA and containment is, I've already forgot that, so that would cost $1,950, then enhanced vapor barrier in the basement of $1,176, and I just felt it would be, I just want to be really clear what we're going to net out of this, and this comes in about 96. I would like to have permission because it's an older house, and we don't know exactly what we're going to find, say 11.5, that off that 49, I would think you'd probably come in around, just if you would, let me work with 11.5, even though we have an estimate of 9,600, because I'm not, I'm always afraid they're going to find something else, and I don't want to bring it back, but I want you all to know exactly what we're netting out of this, and it'll probably be around 140,000, 138,000 or something like that to sell this, but that's pretty much, pretty much it. We got an extension from the purchaser, and the date settlement is extended to February 28, 2020, and Glad Hill Services would perform all the work that we've identified here.
The lender will accept it soon as the work is finished?
Yes. And we will take care of the paperwork on that that says she will, that's what we got. So it's an older home.
So you need a consent or you need a motion?
I think, I really, really want to have a motion on that, that we can, I don't know how to phrase it, how would you phrase that? Kathy, what would you?
Oh, I would do, I'd do a motion to amend the contract approving the sale of 140 South Seaton Avenue, authorizing the mayor to make 11,500 for repairs.
Repair, yeah, if you would, please.
What was the sum, 11,500?
500.
500, okay.
It was 96, but if they find anything else when they go to do the repair.
I don't want to bring it back.
I don't want to bring it back.
Mr. Sweeney, is it okay if I try to make a motion on this? Is that...
Yes.
We're good?
Okay.
Okay. Goodness. I make a motion to amend the sales contract authority of the mayor related to 140 South Seaton Avenue to allow the sum of 11,500 for repairs. In negotiation? In negotiation or no? Do I need that?
I think we're there. She gave an estimate of 100, net you would net 149,000.
I mean, just for phrasing purposes of the motion.
Yeah, I think you're good. I don't think you need negotiation.
Okay, so withdraw in negotiation.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Burns. Any other discussion before we vote?
No, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries, five to zero. All righty, we got through this agenda.
Coming this order. Oh, my God, before that, if we'd had the audit on there, we'd have been...
Correct.
Okay, we've got to set the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, I have a couple of items. One, obviously, is the audit presentation. The final approval, final review and approval. The final approval, final review and approval of the FY 2020 Wayside Exhibits for Consideration. I have discussion of rural transportation, fiscal year 2019 budget transfers to the Capital Fund for consideration.
Is this for public transportation?
For rural transportation. The mayor will make a presentation. I believe it's an offer from the county executive's office.
Would it be, just for the sake of clarity, would it be okay to identify therefore a discussion of rural public transportation, or rural public transit?
Sure, public transit, that'd be fine.
Rural, discussion of rural public transit?
That's, we can start there, rural transportation, we find.
Okay.
I think rural transportation.
Approval of contract to conduct the Silo Hill Stormwater Management Basin Restoration Work for Consideration. And then, and this is for insurance, we need to do this policy for insurance purposes. It's policy P dash, P twenty dash oh two Vehicle Use and Risk Management for Consideration.
Is that a training piece, or what does that relate to?
Basically, it's anybody that's authorized to drive a town vehicle, would have to get so many hours of training. It's also adopting a policy on safe driving practices. I'd like to leave the topic, or the way it's worded right now, as a policy. It may come back from HR that it's an employee amendment, or employee handbook amendment, and if so, I will send out the adjusted language later. But it's something that the insurance company is requiring us to do, and if we do complete it, then we'll also get a discount on our insurances.
For all of our vehicles?
For anyone that drives.
Town vehicles.
Town vehicles.
No, I mean the town vehicles, all the town vehicles is what I meant to ask, not just the electric battery.
No, everybody that drives them.
It just seems odd, it's like overregulation, everybody has a driver's license.
Right, but it's, some of it's defensive driving.
You have to have a safety, we have it where I work, we get, you get a big discount on your.
And you get a discount, so.
It reduces our expenses.
Some money.
And exposure to liability.
Okay.
And then finally, I have one admin business item, and that's the filing of 2019 Planning Commission Report.
How can we squeeze a brown water update in there?
Administrative business or an agenda item?
It depends, if you want to make it an action item, it has to be an agenda item. If you want it just as a discussion, you can do it under admin.
I don't think there'd be anything to vote on, it would be more of a discussion on what's happening and what, what steps have been taken by town staff and the update on everything else, so it'd be more of an administrative item.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Informational.
So you want just a water quality update?
Yes.
I'll put that under admin.
I mean, this is like a month away. I don't think we need anything, do we need a special, there was reference to a workshop this evening.
A workshop, I always wondered about that.
I'm not comfortable waiting a month.
Well, if you look at, unfortunately, if you look at the, I'll just say unfortunately, if you look at the calendar, if you do two weeks out, the offices, the town offices close for the Martin Luther King observance, and then the following day is the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting.
Commissioner Burns, do you have an agenda set for your Citizens Advisory Committee?
I'm working on it now.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd say it's a, it's one of the quarterly required meetings.
It'll be a topic.
Yeah, that'd be a good topic.
And then the Planning Commission is the twenty-seventh.
Well, that would be a good meeting for people to come to, to his.
That's what I was leaning towards, but then I don't want to.
Everything in town.
Set my bounds here.
I'm just afraid if we don't do something sooner, we're not showing the citizens that we deep down care, you know we do, I know we do, but I think we need to act sooner. It's, I mean, it took up three hours of our time tonight, and I think we need to respond back to these people, you know.
Would you consider Wednesday night, the twenty-second, for the workshop, or would we go Tuesday, the twenty-first, and ask the Citizens Advisory Committee to move to the twenty-second, if it's not too disruptive?
Why couldn't he, he run the meeting for the, for that brown water? Can you do that for your agenda?
I could.
And then, whatever information and stuff you brought back, if you had any questions on, I mean.
Well, the, I.
We're going to have it probably every meeting we come up to. We're trying to collect all the information from the citizens and what you have, and to bring for us for a board meeting, so.
The only difficult part about, if it's during the Citizens Advisory Committee, would be, I might as well put a blindfold on and a cigarette in my mouth for the firing squad, because I'd be up here by myself.
Well, that's, yeah, that's where I'm going.
Yeah.
And you can't combine, I don't think you can combine.
I'm not suggesting combination.
No, no, I'm not saying combination either. I'm saying I'm sure it'd be a topic within that meeting.
Well-attended meeting, correct.
However.
I think the value of the workshop would be to provide an update of what staff has found out related to the system, the leak in the system, assuming it's a leak or whatever the cause is. And I think that's the gravity piece for a workshop. Mr. Burns, would it be upsetting to you to consider moving your meeting one day?
No.
Is that too disruptive to your intent to have two nights in a row?
When you, when you go to do the meeting?
Twenty-first.
That's a Monday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, after the King.
After the holiday.
King's birthday.
Yeah, because that's just what the people were complaining about, we're not communicating with them, and we're going to go another month without saying anything, and I don't think we can do that, and maybe we'll have some answers by then where we can take some action and give you approval if you need to hire somebody to come in or something like that, we can, we can do that, because.
Well, I'm not opposed to the workshop at all. I, the problem that I have with moving the Citizens Advisory Committee is, it's on the calendars, it's posted.
Well, let's also go Wednesday night then.
What everybody expects.
Wednesday?
I'm good with the Wednesday night, I'm good with the Sunday night, I'll do whatever. I mean, we got to do this for the, for the people.
Wednesday's fine.
I'd still like to keep a standing administrative business item for the February third then as a.
Informational.
That's great.
Oh, absolutely.
It's a couple weeks later, and then, who knows, something else might happen.
So do you want, you said as an administrative business item?
I don't think, does it?
The only reason it would matter, for example, if.
Well, you get whatever information you can gather for that two weeks, and you'll bring to that meeting.
Yeah, because with the pipe being fixed tomorrow, or something happening tomorrow.
Correct.
In addition to anything else that may happen after that, we're going to have information from people.
Okay.
I mean, tomorrow's the big one, obviously, and then whatever flows.
Well, and you might be able to find out if they're done their work out here at FEMA, and what they did.
Or didn't.
Okay, so, Mr. President, do we have a decision regarding workshop?
Yes, we're going to have the workshop on the Wednesday.
Okay.
The twenty-third. Wednesday, the twenty-third, is that okay?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second of January.
January twenty-second workshop. Seven-thirty, on water quality.
Now, one of the conversations.
And also will be an agenda item for the February meeting, February third.
So the expectation for the workshop, Mr. Sweeney?
Is to gather what, it's an informational meeting, or whatever they can get from, they have, they're going to fix, try to get a leak fixed tomorrow, and then hopefully FEMA will be finished with what they're doing, and maybe the brown water will settle down a little bit before that meeting, and we can see if anything else happens in that process.
It could be informational, or it could be action, we could, might have to take action on something, so don't, don't back us in a corner to where we can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
No, you can always vote on something.
One, one thing to kick around is this question related to compensation as a, just a discussion item or a consideration item, and it would be interesting to hear from perhaps our attorney, how communities, communities handle circumstances such as this, where extraordinary expenses, or are they considered even extraordinary expenses? I mean, personally, I would, but to hear from the town, sorry, to finish the sentence, to hear from the town attorney how other communities handle these sorts of circumstances, and are there incremental, incremental trip wires to trigger that type of compensation?
Well, you can probably ask the other communities, or, you know, Thermo Water or Frederick, or how they dealt with the, what did they do with the people who weren't compensated for the brown water?
Yeah, they did.
I don't know how much you can do.
Sure, sure.
But it doesn't mean we can't.
Right, it doesn't mean we can't, but you.
But we do need to hear that.
Yeah, because the, you know, we heard people talking about seven dollar filters. I know the Urstles up in, I'm not sure where they're, Brookford, whatever, and he's lost four and five uniform shirts. They're a hundred bucks apiece. Yeah, so he's got something to complain about, he's got 500 bucks to complain about, and he's not complaining, he just don't want it to happen anymore, you know, so.
Maybe you could find, from the next meeting, find out what, you know, if they have reimbursed or what they have done. At least it's something we can give to the citizens when they, you know.
And then.
So if you're going to take an action item, then you need to set an actual agenda for that meeting. If it's going to be a workshop with discussion only, we can leave it with the title of workshop, but if you want to take action item, then you need to set an agenda and set an item that says for consideration, or you can't vote on it.
Mr. Sweeney, could I suggest we have it as a discussion item in the next meeting, sorry, in the workshop meeting, and leave the option open for it being an agenda item in the February meeting?
I have no problem with that.
Would that be okay by you? Okay.
Then you might have better direction.
Correct.
Worst case scenario, if something were to occur in the next two weeks in which there needs to be a vote or an agenda item, then it can be brought to Mr. Sweeney, President Sweeney, and it can be.
Correct.
Adjusted with Mr., President Sweeney, as well as the mayor, and then it can be added to the meeting and then announced.
To the meeting, not the workshop?
To the workshop.
Okay.
I thought it was just one.
So whatever we discussed at the very beginning of the meeting about bringing an action item to the president as well as the mayor to be added to.
Right, right, right.
But that, if something were to occur within the next sixteen days, then we would have that ability.
The number ten was added on.
Correct, so, exactly, things of that nature.
Yeah, they called me.
Yes.
And I said yes.
I'm good with that, I'm fine.
Okay, sure.
That would give us that option.
But we'll call it is a special meeting, not a workshop.
Okay, with the option.
If you decide to add an agenda, an official agenda item, you have that option.
Okay, so special meeting, discussion.
Special meeting in January twenty-sixth.
Update of trail, of, trail, gosh, of water.
Water quality, we'll deal with water quality.
Okay.
That, that sounds right, yeah. Which means February third then should be an agenda item, potentially.
Potentially, yes.
Which we can vote on at that night.
Right.
Yeah.
All righty, anything else?
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Sweeney, is there anything I have to say, staff something?
Yes, go ahead.
Does staff want to see anything else related to this to give staff better direction or clarification?
For the special meeting?
For the special meeting. And for the February meeting?
No, but we'll just go over the agenda for the February meeting at the special meeting.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine.
And confirm everything, and there's still enough time.
All righty, so what we have on the agenda to be voted on is, admin will be the water quality up report or, you know, discussion. Number one for the regular agenda will be audit, and then that will be the Wayside Exhibit. Number two, it will be the public transportation, rural public transportation for number three. The budget transfer for number four.